I have to order this regular meeting of the Norco City Council and Financial Authority Wednesday, August 7th at 5:04.
Yes, Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember Bash? Mayor Protem Hanna? Mayor Grunmeyer? All present?
At this time, the City Council will recess to closed session to consider the three matters listed on the agenda. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Norco City Council back to order. We will have a report of actions taken in closed session at this time.
Yes, the City Council considered the matters listed on the agenda in closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
Alright, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for our invocation, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then is Father Mendoza here? Oh, excellent. If you'll please join us at the podium for invocation.
Bow down in your heads, let us pray. Almighty, ever-living God, our loving Father, we thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the life you have given us, for the measure of health and awareness we need to fulfill our callings, for the sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you and for loving all of us. In the Scriptures, oh Lord, you said, "For we are two or three, that as in your name, dear you are in your midst." Oh God, we struggle believe you are always with us. Direct our deliberations now and always. Oh Lord, you also said that citizens ought to obey their governing authorities, since you have established these very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for various levels of searing officials, and in particular for this assembled council here. I am asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and tronics of our people, a kind to us for justice and righteousness, a confidence in what is good and fitting, their ability to work together in harmony even when there is interest in disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please, dear Lord, give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and walk in and around our beloved city of Norco. We make these prayers through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to ask that we do an emergency agenda item. Just a tiny bit of background, one of the things that the Veterans Memorial Committee had talked about is putting a series of flags on the road leading up to the memorial off of Crestview. And what I would like to do, it's something that I think there's a lot of support for, is I would like to dedicate those to former mayor and councilwoman Kathy Azavito. I'd like to put a memorial, not a memorial, but a dedication plaque, and that that strip would always be known. And the reason for that is she was actually the mayor who came up with the idea that that should be the 50th anniversary gift to the residents of Norco. I'd like to maybe put that at the end of our meeting tonight. And I need a four-fifths vote.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to add an emergency item to the agenda about the installation of a dedication plaque.
Plaque, and then also the five flags.
And the flags. Okay, any other discussion? We'll go ahead and have the clerk call the vote.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanna?
Yes.
Mayor Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay. Okay, so we will be taking up that agenda item at the end of our agenda. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to our presentations for this evening. Our first presentation is from Waste Management, so Glenda Chavez will come up to make that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Grunmeyer, Mayor Protem Hanna, Councilmember Bash, Councilmember Hoffman, and Councilmember Newton, city staff and residents of Norco. I am here today to provide you with a presentation on our current state of recycling here in California and nationwide. I wanted to, I know we discussed coming to, in front of you at council, to provide you the same presentation that we provided to the committee, so I'm here to fulfill that. And hopefully, a lot of you guys will, probably some of you have heard the presentation before, but you could take something back and, you know, help us with our recycling. Which one do I press? This one? The current state of the recycling market. The recycling market has experienced changes that have had an impact on the recycling industry across the world. In 2017, over 25% of the world's recyclables were imported by China, including 50% of paper and plastics. China's new import policies banning materials and limiting contamination have had global impacts on recycling programs across the world and in our communities here in the United States. Operation Blue Sky is referred to, the screening efforts in China's ports to inspect loads, enforce material bans, and contamination. I don't know, many of you have heard National Sword, so contamination is attributed to that. It's, they are only accepting items, loads that are 0.5 contamination-free. The reduction of China's markets resulted in the oversupply of commodities and a tremendous drop in the commodity pricing. Surplus is high, and commodity pricing is low. That is our reality right now. So what does this mean? Collection is not recycling. What we're used to be, what we use, what we're continuing to collect, it doesn't necessarily mean that all the items there are recyclable. Recycling doesn't happen until the material is displaced into virgin resources. So we need to be able to collect material, we need to be able to process it, and most importantly, we need to be able to have a market for it. All this has to link together in order for us to have a successful recycling program. Okay. Contamination. That has been the word that we keep hearing ever since China has made those changes. It has had a tremendous impact on waste haulers across the board. Because of contamination, our processing costs have increased substantially. We have loads that are normally, on average, 25% contaminated, but there are some communities that have up to 50% of contamination loads. So what does this mean? It means that when our recycle truck goes to a commercial business, looks at the recycle material, and if it's contaminated, we can't pick it up, because if we do, then it contaminates the clean load that is in the truck. So that means that now we have to send another, we have to call dispatch, ask them to send the trash truck to pick up that recycle as trash because of the contamination it has. I know that sometimes it's not easy to understand what we see, not only at the collection process, but also at our facilities where we process recyclables, so I would like to share with you a video that could kind of give you an idea of what we're facing.
I've been driving for Waste Management for 25 years. This is Christmas tree, propane, and plastics bags. It's not recyclable.
Only bottles, cans, paper, and cardboard go in the recycle bin. Some recycling programs have over 25% contamination. We spend too much time sorting through contamination and not enough time sorting through good material to help the environment.
The oddest thing I'd have seen was a skinned deer.
I saw a badger dead with his eyes open, and it terrified me. I thought it was going to wake up, so I didn't touch that one.
The most common thing I would see contaminated in line would be Christmas lights.
Water hoses that stop the stars from spinning around. And anytime we get jammed, the whole system shut down. Right now, as you can see, everything is shut down because we have to clean the machines.
There's a lot of plastic bags that we get through the system. Grocery bags, bags filled with leaves, that's also get caught up in the screen.
String cleaning is when we go inside the screen and we take out the unwanted material, old clothing, old shoes, metal material.
When we go inside the screens, you might have a hole sticking out the shaft, and we have to pry it out. Or we might have cords that's wrapped around three shafts, or ropes, or chains, and we have to use the tools to get those things out. The tools we have is a hook knife, some wire cutters, and some pliers.
Six times a bet, we stopped the machines to clean for contamination.
Well, it would probably take us up to two hours to clean the string out when recycling is not done properly.
We try to clean the screen 100% so it can run smooth as possible without causing any jam.
Now that I work here at Waste Management, I tell my friend that recycling is really important. If more people would recycle right, we could process more recycling a day.
So just to end that, after that video, on average, our industry pays about over $150 per contaminated, per ton, per contamination load. So it is, it is something that we are experiencing an increase substantially in our costs and labor as well. Value of recyclable market materials, glass, mixed plastic, mixed paper, have very little value today, yet combined with contamination represents 65% of what is processed. So an example we wanted to provide you with is that in 2017, we were getting $97.50 per ton. In 2018, that dropped to $5 a ton. Cardboard, clear, plastic, aluminum, steel-colored plastics, which is like your shampoo and your laundry detergent bottles, still have a positive value, but only represent 35% of what is recyclable by us today. So we have seen a increase in cardboard growth by 20%, and that is attributed to us, our shopping, you know, habits have changed. Now we click and we get something shipped to us, so that has had a positive impact on cardboard growth. But at the same time, if the cardboard that we're placing in our bins gets contaminated by other items, then the quality of that cardboard is jeopardized. That's my secret code, right there. Thank you. So here in California, we have some state regulations that we have to abide by. As recycling costs are increasing, we have seen other states completely eliminate the recycling programs because it's just not cost-effective. However, here in California, we do not have that luxury. We have to continue to find avenues to continue to have these programs succeed, and it's definitely, has been a challenge with the current state of recycling. So I'd like to, I'm talking about California's AB 341, which is the mandatory commercial recycling, which we kind of all have been familiar with, and also AB 1826, which is the mandatory commercial organics recycling. Those two are existing laws, and I'm also going to touch on future legislation, SB 1383, which has to do with short-lived camlet pollutions, which means its focus is to bring organic recycling to everyone at the residential level as well. So AB 341, the mandatory recycling was, came into effect in 2012. It basically requires any commercial business who has, who generates four cubic yards of trash to have a recycling program. It also is, multifamily dwellings who have five units or more are also subject to this regulation. So any commercial business or a multifamily dwelling that has five units or more has to have a recycling program. It establishes a goal statewide to have 75% diversion by 2020. This is for all trash disposal in the city, not just AB 341 for businesses. The city is responsible as well to make sure that this goal is achieved. Maybe, I went too fast. Is that it? Okay. So AB 1826, the mandatory commercial organics recycling program. It requires, it's been in place since 2016, and we made sure that in 2017, we worked with you guys to approve our organics rates, which were important because we can't really charge for a service if we don't have the rates, so I do appreciate your support on that. We have been working diligently to promote the program and get people to, you know, sign up for the, for the service as well, but it has been challenging, especially this year. We did have a change in the regulation, well, in the timeline. As of January 1st, 2019, anyone who is producing four cubic yards of trash has to have an organics program. The previous year, it had to just be organics, but now it's everything. But we have a couple of different exclusions that we have, we have to, like if a business isn't generating organics, how can we expect it to recycle organics? But that's definitely something that we have to do on a case-by-case basis, and that is by getting the information from the businesses to let the city know if they do indeed fall under that exemption. In 20, in January 2020, that four cubic yard requirement goes to two cubic yards, so the number of customers who need to be compliant will increase. The future regulation, SB 1383. This regulation is, whole goal is to reduce greenhouse gases. So it is also a regulation that is not only with CalRecycle, but it's also with California Air Resources Board, so it's a combined effort. The goal for them is that by 2020, they want to reduce the levels of the statewide disposal of organics by 50%, and 2025 by 75%, and they want to have a 20% improvement in edible food recovery by 2025. What does that mean? They also don't just want us to recycle their organic rates, they want us to, they want Californians to have implemented food recovery programs where people can, you know, if you're not going to use this food, it doesn't go to waste, it goes to other organizations that distributed, like food banks and what have you. Who is impacted it? Residents, multifamily dwellings, businesses, cities, schools, pretty much everyone. And like I said, how it's going to be done is by having food recovery programs and organic recycling. The important thing to know, though, is that SB 1383 is still being reviewed. There has been a lot of comments from haulers, from various industries, in trying to get CalRecycle to listen to their suggestions so that hopefully they can find a medium. So it's still in the process, it has not been finalized, so we're all really, we have, as haulers, have commented on the areas that we would like to have more flexibility, but it's still yet to be determined as to what will be adopted or not. So with that, though, there have, the important thing is that we do have key implementation dates. The goal is to have this launched, it takes, to effect on January 1st, 2020. So it's around the corner, even though we don't think, the way this year's been going, it's probably here sooner than later, but the goal this year is to get the regulation adopted. The goal in January 2020 is to have a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal. Then, like I said, the regulation is to take full effect in the state and has to begin enforcing it on January 1st, 2022. And then on January 1st, 2024, regulation requires local government to take enforcement. So organic waste recycling, SB 1383 requires 50 to 100 new and expanded organic waste facilities. In California today, we have about 180 composting facilities, with 34 of them accepting food waste. We here at Waste Management at the Illinois Empire, we do have existing commitments with partnerships with AgroMan, who is currently the entity that is collecting our commercial organic waste. And the way they collect it is, they collect, they mix it in with the green waste, so it's composted. We do have other partnerships with other approved organic waste processes throughout California. We recently acquired Harvest Power Compost Facility in Tuller and Lathrop, is that the way? Lethrop. So we are actively looking for reliable, you know, outlets for this big regulation that's coming, because we understand that, you know, having a viable processor who is going to be compliant with the strict requirements that SB 1383 is going to impose on them is very important to us. So we do have that established network already, it's just a matter of, you know, implementing it at the larger scale. The reason why we like composting, because it's still the most cost-effective. It's, it isn't cheap, but it is a lot cheaper than other processing facilities that we have in the state. So obviously, with these regulations comes a tremendous amount of responsibility for jurisdictions, and us as your waste hauler and your partner, we have put a lot of effort into making sure that we are there to assist the city in, in making sure that it reaches its goals, and also that it has existing plans that are, you know, feasible, and that the city and the hauler can fully execute. So we, we work with the city on a yearly basis to make sure that all the items that are in the city's commercial recycling program plan are met, and also with the organics program. So these are programs that the city outlines what their efforts are going to be, and on an annual basis, CalRecycle checks, makes sure that we met all those targets. So we work closely with Chad and making sure that that is completed properly. In 2017, we hired a full-time commercial recycling representative in response to the increased, increased expectations for CalRecycle. Obviously, the state thinks that these numbers are realistic, but every city's different, there's different challenges, so they kept asking for more and more and more. So we saw the need to have someone come on board who focuses completely on making sure that the outreach, the education is done to educate the businesses so that they have the information they need to implement a recycling program in their business, and therefore making them compliant. So along with the commercial recycling representative and myself, we do help provide education information on AB 341 and 1826. I put together some packets where you will see some samples of the items that we have created for the city and that have been distributed at different times of the years. One of the things that we offer businesses is because, I mean, we understand that trash can be overwhelming, and not to mention when you add regulations to it. So our recycling representative does offer onsite site audits to make sure that we understand what they're generating and give them the adequate service level that they need, keeping in mind the regulations, but also the cost to the businesses. We provide contamination training and education, and we also offer the necessary support for the annual CalRecycle report that the city has to turn in, and we're, we attend all the CalRecycle meetings when the city is asked to meet with CalRecycle representatives. I have pictures of some of the loads that we get in the recycle bins that are contaminated. As you can see, some, you know, plastic bags, we have concrete, so it is a challenge, and we, we're committed to making sure that we provide the adequate education needed to change behavior. One of the things that Waste Management is really proud of is that we're the only company that really has invested at the national level to provide comprehensive material, educational material, to our customers and even to people who are not serviced by us. People can go to our website, recycle often recycle right, get information on recycling, how to implement a recycling program at home, at your business, so it's a great resource that I encourage everyone to go and visit. And there's videos, so it, you know, if people are visual, there's different type of material that you can tailor to, to who you're presenting the information to. So there's the website, like I said, there's information from municipal, for municipal customers, commercial businesses, residents, apartment condos, and schools, so there's a complete array of things. I know that we don't service the schools that, you know, they have where, but, you know, I encourage teachers to go in there and visit because that's one of the things that unfortunately, schools go with the lowest bid, but if we don't educate the future generations, then we're really going to have a challenging time changing behavior. What the city has done to help, it has partnered with us to have a consistent message about what is acceptable in our recyclable containers in all their city communications. One of the things that we kept seeing as we met with CalRecycle was, okay, I seen your plan, I know what you're doing, but what are you doing to enforce it? That was the question that not only the city of Norco, but cities across the state have been asked. So, and part of SB 1383 is to have a ordinance that will enforce the regulations, so I think that the fact that you guys voted for the ordinance last year is a big step forward. I think that that was a great move, and because it helps us send the message, because people keep getting mail, they keep getting emails from us, and it's more mostly perceived as something that we want to make money, but in reality, it's, you know, this is a state mandate, so that hopefully will help us put more teeth into the state mandate. You have, you know, we work closely with Chad and also Gina's team to make sure You have, you know, we work closely with Chad and also Gina's team to make sure that we provide the necessary education materials for both residents and the businesses. And one of the things that you guys did also was increase the overage fee where we were seeing a lot of trash bins filled with cardboard. So that way people understand that, that behavior has to change because if you recycle, then you wouldn't get an overage because it would be placed in the appropriate container. Also with me, I have Lily Coro. So if I miss something, Lily, go, feel free to, you know, bring it up. But if you guys have any questions, that ends my presentation.
Do any council members have any questions for Glenda?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. Glenda, and I learned this when we come on the subcommittee, that little recycle triangle is on so much material that's out there that we purchased. Then when you go find out, when you go to your list, it's not. It shouldn't be thrown in that recycle bin. So I mean, that's an industry situation that probably should be clarified, at least, I don't want to make another regulation, but as the recyclable agency is, I'm going to use you guys, maybe that should be something that Waste Management can handle.
Because, yeah, I do see the confusion because people see the recycle logo, they assume that it's recyclable. With the current market, though, some of the items that would, might be acceptable this month, they might not be acceptable that month. So that's what the challenge that we have right now to create a overall universal language. But our main goal is to educate people that that symbol and that number inside the symbol is just to let you know what quality of plastic that is, not necessarily that it is recyclable.
Okay. And my second question, and this has to do with the organics, because in Los Angeles, when there were the organics for restaurants, do they have to be a licensed hauler to get rid of that or they just contract with anyone? Because what's happened is, is if you know or don't know, restaurants are finding people to take the recyclables, their, their organics and their leftover foods, and they're going down the skid row. And that's where, you know, all that did was add to the rest. These people were scrounging around for food and that's what they did. So that caused more of a problem. So is there any licensing on who the hauler is or has to be?
Well, in LA, we, they recently renewed their franchise hauler agreement. So there is seven approved haulers that service the area. Because of CalRecycle's desire to want to find avenues to give food to, there is, you know, some language about that. However, I don't know if, if there is any limitation as to it being taken to a particular homeless area or what have you.
I just don't want to see it happen here.
And it will. I think that 1383 is coming with that. At this point, CalRecycle has allowed us to say, oh, it's being processed through a third party. And that is as much as the documentation, there's no follow-up with that third party, whether they're doing things correctly with that material that's being collected. With 1383 coming down the pipeline, there's actually going to be accountability. We're going to be moving beyond the haulers, who we obviously have accountability in the cities that we manage, but these other sub-businesses that have thrived in this recycling, they will also be accountable and they will need to be licensed and they will need to report what they're doing with that material. So there's going to be some teeth in that law to be able to manage what you are discussing because I am very familiar with LA. So things will be changing as far as we're concerned, what we typically refer to as third-party recyclers.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's being addressed somewhere. Thank you. Go for the question, Mayor.
So AB 341 on, as, as a partner with the city and in a mandate by 2020 for the city to recycle 75%. What is your, your business plan as our partner to meet that 75% requirement when there is a, a reduction in the market for recyclables?
So we have addressed that at our meetings with CalRecycle is, is, in a way, we're being, the cities are being asked to increase participation, right? But with that increased participation, the, the direct correlation would be that diversion would be increasing. But with contamination, with commodity prices going down and us having to find reliable avenues for recyclables, it has been challenging, but we are committed to, I mean, Waste Management has, you know, we're not going to be landfilling things. We are committed to making sure that we have the resources to provide the necessary assistance in making those reductions, but it has been challenging because we can't force people to recycle. And so.
I guess it's more of where's your, where's your market? I mean, if we recycle 75%, where's that material going if, if there is no market to sell your recyclables?
So we do have, we actually are, we have partners in the United States as well. So we have been, we have partners here in the United States. We have started selling things to India, to other markets. Because, I mean, obviously, we, we can't just rely on China, so we have been able to find other markets.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Great report. I'm struggling with this recycling thing as we talked about. Is there any way that I could take a tour of that thing that they keep breaking down? Can we go there and have a look at that?
I don't know if they'll let you go on the actual machine the way they did.
I don't want to go on the machine. I just want to see it.
Yeah, no, definitely, we could arrange some tours.
All right, so I'll, I'll call you about that.
It does.
I know, it sounds stupid, but I've never been on a trash truck and I've never seen a recycling plant and it just looks interesting, you know?
I'd need a recycle.
Oh, shut up.
So when you take Kevin to your, your MRF, all right, will you first explain to him that that's the smell of money?
Well, not the MRF anymore. It doesn't smell like money anymore. It's costing us a lot more money than we actually get. But it goes back to the whole fact that we have to make sure that we are diverting material from the landfill because of our regulations. I did give your Spanish language recyclables. Okay. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Glenda, very much for the presentation.
And in your packets, the last page is going to be, I'm working with our marketing team to start developing the outreach for manure and green waste. So I hope you like the ad. It's the last page of the packet.
Thank you. At this time, we have one more presentation on California redistricting commission, and that will be Jody Philkins-Webber.
This the top button or is it just the big arrow? Okay, great. Okay. I appreciate the opportunity. Mr. Okoro had reached out. As you know, I have served on the first California Citizens Redistricting Commission since 2010, and it's a very important time right now because the next application phase is starting. So just by the way of background, redistricting is the process by which every jurisdiction throughout the entire United States actually redraws the voting district boundary lines for, in this case in California, your state senate, state assembly, your congressional districts, as well as the State Board of Equalization, which isn't up there on the screen. What's important about this is that previously in California, the last occasion in which the responsibility for redistricting in 2001 was with the California State Legislature. And in fact, that's been California's history. It's been the history throughout jurisdictions throughout the entire United States. And you might have heard a term known as gerrymandering, which actually is also pronounced Garymandering. And the family had wrote a letter to the United States Supreme Court saying, it's actually pronounced Garymandering after Governor Gary. What had occurred previously is obviously what you've also heard of as partisan Garymandering. You have legislature, the legislators were actually redrawing their own voting district boundary lines, for instance, for the assembly districts that they ran in. And what you had is a circumstance in which your elected representatives never changed over decades and decades. And so obviously, that caused quite a bit of frustration for the citizens in California. So essentially, in 2008, proposition, or 2008 Proposition 11 was on the California ballot. It was known as the Voters First Act. And that, that particular proposition basically usurped the power to redraw the voting district boundary lines from the legislature and actually created a 14-member citizen commission. And that commission was charged with the responsibility in that proposition to redraw the voting district boundary lines for the state senate, the state assembly, and the State Board of Equalization. Well, it was such a great idea and it passed that in 2010, they added Proposition 20, which added the congressional district lines to the Citizen Redistricting Commission's responsibilities. So as you see there, the Citizens Redistricting Commission is made up of 14 members, five Republicans. It's actually, is the way that the Constitution is written, is five members of the largest political party, five members of the second-largest political party, and four members of individuals that are not part of the other two. As it currently stands, it's five Republicans, five Democrats, and four other. But obviously, if you're paying attention to the voter registration and the demographics in the state of California, that could be subject to change later on, but that is another political discussion. So at this point, once the commission got seated, we held 34 public hearings. We had 2,700 speakers at those public hearings and 22,000 written submissions. And that's just all as to what the commission actually did. And here's one picture I found recently because we held one of our public hearings right here in the city of Norco. And as I recall, it was standing room only, and we had an opportunity to hear from, from numerous people. Right now, though, once we finished our line drawing, you can see there's an example on your left, there is a district from 2001, gerrymandered by the state legislature and the district that we created, which was far more compact and consistent with the information we received from the citizens throughout the entire process. This entire process was live-streamed, open, transparent, and subject to participation by every citizen of the state of California. So we were very proud in that regard. A study on transparency, we scored an A. The California Supreme Court upheld the state senate map challenge by a vote of seven to zero. There were several other challenges, as well as a referendum that also failed in challenging our maps. And of those voters who actually were aware of the commission's work, two out of one actually favored that. So the reason this is important now is that I'm almost done, thank goodness. So it's a 10, nine-year commitment. We changed the statute, but essentially, as of July 3rd, 2020, I will be done and I will no longer be eligible to become a commissioner on the next commission because I'll get to some of those conflicts of interest. So what makes this very poignant right now is the California State Auditor's Office is charged under the Constitution with actually selecting the next commission. And they have started that process as of June 6th. So they are now soliciting through outreach efforts, such as what I'm doing. I've spoken at numerous meetings throughout the course of the last year to educate individual state auditor's offices doing it as well. So the initial application phase started June 6th. The date I want you to pay attention to is August 19th up there. It is not a typo. In the agenda, and when I prepared this presentation and submitted this to Mr. Okoro, the deadline was set for Friday, August 9th. But as of Monday, and we'll get through some of the statistics I'll show you, they are dissatisfied with the number of individuals that have actually applied thus far, and they don't believe that it is truly reflective of the diversity in the state of California. So they have extended the deadline by 10 days and now the deadline for the initial application phase will expire on August 19th. As of August 5th, the numbers are 13,745 people have applied. In comparison, in 2010, 31,000 people submitted initial applications. So they are down quite considerably. Interesting to note that males have submitted applications at 59%, whereas females are only 40%. So you've got nearly a 20% gap there. So there is a significant encouragement for women to actually apply for the commission. Regionally, it's very important as well. I spoke at a meeting just last week here in Harupa Valley. 40% of the applicants currently come from southern coastal region. That would be all the way up, I mean, from basically Oxnard down. 40%, that's quite significant. But only 11% of the current initial applicants come from the Inland Empire. And that's significant because last round of redistricting, which coincides with the census, which is population count, because all of these districts have to be equal population. You've heard one person, one vote. That's number one, United States constitutional requirement for redistricting is equal population. In Riverside County, we had the highest growth of population for the last round of the census that ended in 2010. And people believe that more than likely, we might still be in that same category. So it's very important that you can, and I'll go through some of these other categories, that you reach out to individuals that you know in the Inland Empire that may be qualified to actually do, to actually put in this initial application. So the state auditor's office has already selected what's called an applicant review panel. That panel consists of one Democrat, one Republican, and one declined to state or other. And their principal responsibility is to conduct a screening of the applicants and go through the entire interview process. So just briefly, I don't want to scare you, but there are some requirements in the application process. And so you can have an idea generally. The application process this time around in the initial phase is very easy. It takes you essentially 10 minutes. You go on their website, and I just glanced at an, an application form or example application, which wasn't available before, but now it is. It'll take you 10 minutes and it'll run through a series of questions to determine whether or not you have, for instance, conflicts of interest. Obviously, conflicts of interest are significant to evaluate because the entire purpose in creating the first independent Citizens Redistricting Commission in California was to eliminate the conflicts of interest that obviously the state legislature had when they were drawing their own voting district boundary lines. So we wanted to create, by the passage of those propositions, a commission that would be free of conflicts of interest. Number one, you cannot and will not be eligible to serve if you have been and are an elected official, of course, right? And I mean, only at the state or congressional level, not city council level, by the way. So in other words, no service as a paid officer, employee, paid consultant, lobbyist, staff member of Congress, or the legislator, or the State Board of Equalization. You are ineligible to serve if you've contributed more than $2,500 to any candidate, and the same again for bona fide family members, immediate family members. You're also ineligible to serve if you have any state contracts or contracts with the federal government. Again, trying to eliminate the appearance of impropriety and conflicts of interest that could exist. You must have voted in the last two, or two of the last three general statewide elections. Also, to avoid people potentially gaming the system, you must have maintained your party affiliation, whether as a Democrat, Republican, or whatever else you've been registered for, for the last five years. So we need to make sure that people aren't trying to game it to basically get on the commission in one particular party preference to manipulate the system. So that was built in there as well. So the state auditor's office will actually go through the initial application phase, and if you are eligible, then they can move on to the second application phase. So let me just say one thing at this point. If you don't know necessarily whether you're eligible or not, it is very important for you to, at least if you're interested, to get your initial application in and to get it in by August 19th. At any time throughout the entire process, you can change your mind and say, wait a minute, you know, I don't know, because I had that opportunity throughout. And as I go through a little bit about how some of these numbers changed, it literally got down to selecting a final commissioner, and she had to end up declining by the first week in January 2000, or 2011, actually. And so we had to actually replace the commissioner. So going through this process, if you're initially interested, doesn't necessarily mean you're necessarily committed. But it is very important for us to get our numbers up, very important for us to spread the word in the Inland Empire because of the fact that we have such low application rate right now, and that's what's really significant. So if you get past the conflicts of interest, then we move on and the applicant review panel will go to the second phase, and you will be invited to actually complete the second application phase. The second application phase generally consists of about four to six essay questions. And in those essay questions, you're demonstrating these particular analytical skills. And in those essay questions, you're demonstrating these particular analytical skills, financial, or actually impartiality, appreciation of California's diversity, and that's geographically as well as racially. And so basically, you'll be answering questions in essay format. At this particular point in the application phase, they're a little hesitant to say when the financial disclosure would come about, but as city council members, you all may know, and obviously, my very interested citizens here know, that each of you have to complete what's called a Form 700, which is a form that requires you to identify whether you may have financial interests in companies that exist in the state of California. And obviously, again, to try and eliminate the appearance of impropriety with conflicts of interest. The service limitation is very interesting, because when I was going through that second phase, we got a phone call that said, by the way, if you're interested in doing this and you actually make it all the way, you will be ineligible to run for public office for 10 years. And I think I've had that conversation with a few of you from time to time. You're also prohibited from an appointed office for five years. And again, the idea is, on the back end, once the redistricting is done, that you weren't actually drawing lines, so that you could actually run in a particular assembly district that you live in, or senate district, things of that nature. So that's the purpose, is to prevent the conflict of interest in the future as well. So that's something to keep in mind if you have, and it's very difficult to do, I mean, to think that you've got a plan and figure out where you might want to be in your career potentially 10 years from now. It's a very difficult decision, but that is something that you, if you go through this process and you get to the second application phase, they could very well ask you, by the way, you're going to have this type of commitment for the next 10 years. And that's why mine's up July 3, 2020. So, let's see, what else we have here? So once they get through the second application phase, the applicant review panel then reduces the candidates down to 120. So on the last occasion, I said there were 31,000 people who completed the initial application phase. It dropped down following conflicts of interest to about 6,000, and I think that it went down to 5,000 that completed the second application phase. So they had to narrow that down from 5,000 down to 120 individuals for interviews, and that would be 40 Democrats, 40 Republicans, and 40 others. Then from there, they narrowed it down to 60 for interviews. At this point, it was an hour and a half interview, livestreamed in front of the three individuals that made up the applicant review panel. That particular interview and all of the candidates at that particular point were subject to public comment. So again, I'm running through this, because in the event that you might know of individuals who also might be applying currently, keep in mind that this entire process is still available for everybody looking at potential candidates that could be on the next commission. So the second phase of the applications ends at about September, but September 11, I think, if they haven't extended that date. So throughout this entire process, as you understand particular individuals, maybe candidates, you can write public comments in support or opposition of them, and they will be reviewed. After those 60 individuals, actually, it was 120, narrowed down to 60, excuse me. This is the only time in which the legislature actually gets involved in the entire process. The legislature, the leadership of the legislature actually has a right to strike 24 individuals indiscriminately without advising anyone, potentially of the basis behind their decision. On the last occasion in which they stroked the 24, most of them were white men. So given the numbers that exist now, and don't be offended by my aspect and discussion of race, because that's essentially what is required throughout the Constitution, and that's why race is a significant factor based on the diversity in the state of California and the mandate that the commission be made up and reflect the diversity of California. So I have no qualms in discussing race anymore after the entire process that I've been through. So don't take offense to that, but it exists in the Constitution, so therefore, we do discuss it. After the legislative strike, it goes down to 36 finalists for what's called random selection. So that's exactly what it is. That's a picture of state auditor Elaine Howell. And pursuant to the Constitution, she basically, you'll see in the background, a list of the Democrats, 1 through 12. She actually opened up a livestream on the internet and in Sacramento, live at a public hearing, a box of bingo balls, and those bingo balls were marked 1 through 12. She put them into a container like that. She mixed it up, and then one of the balls came out, and then whatever that number is that corresponded to the individual that was identified there, she would select the first three Democrats. Then she did the same with the Republicans. And when my number came out, actually, it didn't go down the little ramp there. It actually went out the side, and I didn't know it was mine at the time, but I wasn't even sure it was valid. But obviously, it ended up being valid. So at that point, you instantly get a cell phone call saying, you made it. Do you want to be a commissioner? And at that point, you have to commit, and I did. So it's three Democrats, three Republicans, and two declined-to-state-or-other applicants. So the first eight commissioners are selected randomly at that point, because the pool is essentially equal. Pursuant to the terms of the Constitution, the next, or the first eight of us then select the final six. And again, the purpose for this is to obviously correct for the disparities in the makeup of a random selection. So for instance, in the first eight commissioners, there were four that were Asian, and obviously, out of the totality, that was not reflective of the entire population of the Asians back at that time, and they made up 14% of the population. So obviously, it was very high. Also, what's interesting is demographic, I mean geographic diversity. The first eight of us, the five of them were from Northern California. So obviously, that wasn't reflective of the pool of the citizenry in Southern California. So, and when you also look at it financially and socioeconomically, we filled it in pretty well. I don't know if we have, yeah, there we are. Okay. So that's us in 2011. And so at this point, let's see what else I have here for you. Basically, that's it. That's kind of the nutshell. Right now, if you'd like more information and would like to complete the initial application phase, you can find that at this long website that they created, perfect for outreach, I do believe we have a link at wedrawthe lines.ca.gov, which is our website as well. So if there's any questions?
Does council have any questions?
Jody?
Yes.
I just wanted to tell you how, I think, proud all of us are of you and your dedication.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Did an absolute great job.
Thank you.
So.
And we hope the next commission does well. And if you don't make it as a commissioner, then certainly, the public process will be open for everybody's participation, and I will certainly be doing that as well. So thank you very much for your time.
I just have one question. Do you think that the lack of applicants now is attributed to the 10 years of, or nine years of service you have to give up? Do you think that a reality struck in for these people?
I think that, well, there's two reasons. I think that those that were paying attention to the process understood how rigorous it was. But my response to that would be, is that we actually changed the Constitution and gave the next commission six months. And so I don't think anybody realizes that actually, they have six extra months to do their work. So I think it's also a process of understanding, which I do in some of my more lengthy presentations, and I'll certainly answer any other questions, is that you certainly can keep your full-time job, you know, provided that you work it out with your employer. You are going to miss some time from work, but it also is a paid position in that this time, with the adjustment for inflation, you get $375 per day. The last commission decided that six hours constituted a day. But for the most part, the hearings were held in the evenings. So again, the next commission will set up their own standards, but I think it's the time commitment, not understanding entirely that they have a little bit more time, and possibly just thinking that they can't do it as an employer, but, you know, while still working. But all of our hearings were also, for the most part, held in the evenings, because that's when average citizens could actually attend the hearings as well. So it's a lack of outreach as well, because from June, I had heard about it on the radio, and only as of Monday was the first occasion which I actually heard a radio ad on the same radio station that I was listening to in 2009, actually, in 2009. So I think it just depends on where their outreach focus has been, from the state auditor's office as well.
Well, I want to thank you for your time and services, saying, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jody, and thank you for your 10 years of dedication. I remember when all this happened before, and I know it had to be an honor for you. It was, made all of us in the area happy that you got on there, and you did a good job, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, we're going to go ahead and get on to our city council business items. We'll start with item number one, which is city council communications reports on regional boards and commissions. We are going to start with Councilman, or Mayor Protem Hanna.
We did some little short videos on these. This is the 15 facts on the 15 freeway expansion.
The Riverside County Transportation Commission presents 15 facts on the 15 express lanes. This edition focuses on the batch plant's conveyor belt operation and its importance to the project. The batch plant is a portable facility to produce concrete, providing onsite support to pave the new 15 express lanes. The plant has a new tool to deliver concrete to the worksite safely and efficiently. A conveyor belt spans the northbound lanes of Interstate 15 near Hidden Valley Parkway. The conveyor belt was built to carry concrete from the batch plant over the freeway to waiting trucks, which then carry the concrete to the paving machine. This overhead transport of concrete to the 15 median has multiple benefits. There's no need for concrete-carrying trucks to cross traffic on I-15. Because the conveyor belt has tall sides, it prevents concrete from falling into travel lanes and affecting motorists. Crews load the larger open dump trucks faster than standard mixer-type trucks, and then have a clear, direct haul to the paving machine, creating a more efficient operation. The process requires fewer trucks to supply the paving machine with concrete, reducing thousands of truck trips within the project area. The batch plant conveyor belt is one of several innovations that RCTC is using to deliver the 15 express lanes project. This innovation is creating a safer operation for both construction crew members and the
One more note on the RCTC. The two big yellow cranes you see sitting down here on the bridge on the 15 freeway that's been there for months, I think this coming weekend or next weekend, they're going to begin bringing in the beams that come in there to hook those two bridges together. They're bringing everything in from the top instead of coming up from the bottom. It's safer, but they manufacture those beams in Paris, and they weigh 110,000 tons, I believe, or 110 tons, and they're 180 feet long, so they're going to bring them in at night, and it'll take both of those cranes to pick them up one at a time and set them down in there from the top of the freeway. So I'm not sure what day. I'll find, I'll try to find out tomorrow, and what day they're bringing them in. I'd like to go down there and watch them, because I don't know how they're going to drive a truck with a 110-foot-long, or 180-foot-long beam on it from Paris here without, they got a lot of corners to make. So, yeah, it'll be carefully. Okay, we're going with the RTA here, and their report. Our ridership continues to rise, and the, is that the summer bus program there? Yeah, the youth program for 25-cent rides during the summer months and during the holidays. This has got to be a big program. A student with a card, a student card from kindergarten through 12, they can ride the bus anywhere they want to for 25 cents. So it's really been a hit. You can send your kid to the beach and everywhere else, 50 cents round trip. And, let's see, they had 214,000 riders, I believe, yeah, the first year, and it's gone up considerably this time. All right, the next one there, Matt. The beach bus now rolls, the commuter link Express Route 202 is now providing extra weekday and weekend trips from Marietta and Temecula to the Oceanside Transit Center through September the 2nd. So the ridership to the beaches expanded quite a bit. The college student ridership is on the rise, and what that is, is that several of the colleges in the area, it costs you $6 a semester to ride the bus, and that's also 24, 24/7 anywhere that the bus goes, but it's trying to take cars out of the parking lots at the colleges. And Norco just got theirs renewed. The Norco College just got theirs renewed this summer. Okay, Matt. Oh, and there, Matt and I come up with a little logo for our vector report here. Mice and mosquitoes are both the main creatures in vector. And the spraying continues along the San Ana River between Eastvale and Norco to combat the mosquito breeding. And in fact, they'll come out again Friday morning at 2:00 a.m. and spray that area over there. And also, in Orange County, and I'm sure we've got some here that hadn't had a report on it this week, but this last week in Orange County, they found several mosquitoes and birds that are infected with the West Nile virus. So everybody be careful when you go outside, put your protective clothing on, or your spray, whatever you use. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a lot of things to go to. I covered for Berwyn as Master of Ceremonies, the concert at the park, since, even though Jeff's in the audience, but I'm going to make sure you guys come out August 16 for the next concert in the park while I get to emcee the Woody and the Longboards. But first of all, I want to thank everyone for attending the National Day of the American Cowboy and participation in that. It was a good event. It was hot, but it's July, so what can I tell you, it's hot. I want to thank Mayor Grunmeyer. She won the ladies division of the cowship throwing. And Lieutenant, show him your trophy. Come on, show him the trophy. There it is. He is, yes, he is the Willie Mays of the baseball. You can throw that ball away from the end. So, what a day. So you're now a professional cowship thrower. Okay. Ooh-hoo. But Matt flipped in my little picture. I'm proud of the fact that, there it is, August is rodeo month, George Ingalls Park. We're going to start you off this Sunday, August 11, with the National Police Rodeo. There's a barrel race following it. And then the California High School rodeo on August 17, Norco Posse rodeo, August 23, 24, and 25. And then right after that, and it's not up there, but that's my fault, August 30 and 31 at the fair. You got some more ranch rodeo and bull riding action on until September 1 and Labor Day. So we're going to fill the town with rodeo. So that's all I can say. That's Norco, and that's what it should be. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Bash.
I couldn't remember all the stuff, so I just put a couple. I attended WRCOG, and I think I have some, well, first, let's hit the senior advisory committee. I actually got to that late, but I was really glad that I got there late, because I got to talk to staff. Brian, we do something that that staff does that I, for some reason, all the years I've been going there, did not know they did. They do well-being calls. When seniors don't show up, they call them, and if they don't answer, they track them down. I mean, I see the supervisor back there, your staff does a fantastic job. I was so impressed with that, because I was, there's somebody that I know well who's very ill, and I said, do you have her address? Oh, we called her, and that's how I found out about this. They actually drive to their house to make sure they're okay. I mean, I am so impressed with that. I mean, it made me so proud to be, I hope every city does it, but it made me proud to be a Norco resident. So thank you, and your staff is fantastic. Party partners were so much fun. I got to dance and stuff, so. I have a, do you have the paperwork? Okay, I'm just going to kind of show this at our meeting that was on Monday. I'm not going to go through this, but the reason that I kind of want to I'm not gonna go through this, but the reason that I kind of want to show these is outside of these meetings, your city council is fighting all the time. They're trying to be aware. They're trying with the League of Cities, WRCOG, RCA, we're trying, all the groups we belong to. It's all about how do we protect local control? How do we stay on top of the things that Sacramento does positively and negatively for us? We're really, really lucky. We have Andy that's really using on top of this stuff, so whenever I call him and I'm all upset, he goes, "Oh yeah, well, that's what's happening here." But is there another page? Is that the only one? This is just to show you what's going on with League of Cities. Things were opposing, things were supporting. And then the next one basically deals with Rena numbers. You've all heard about Sacramento wants us to have high-density housing, which, as you know, Norco has not had any high-density housing in 50 years, except that that was approved by the county, which is why actually we're forced to speak on a city. But these are the kind of things that we're dealing with, and these are some important meetings because we don't know what's gonna happen, what they're gonna be forcing us to do. Contained in the other two, even though we beat down the Weiner bill, they're still trying to find all different kinds of ways to sort of infiltrate and force communities like ours while carving out their own communities. That's the really interesting thing, is they try to pass these laws, they don't apply to where they live. And so it's really kind of interesting how that all works. One of the bills that I'm kind of following and very nervous about is the attack on Prop 13. There's a lot of different attacks, one of which is to hit the businesses. I don't think they understand that a hamburger today costs $15 because of the $15 wage increase. We're also, as I've said before, we're trying to prepare through Norco College for the onslaught of people being put out of work because of automation and things like that. So anyway, I just kind of wanted people to know that when we go to these meetings, we're not just gabbing and stuff. We, in fact, three of them are sitting there. We're very well informed at WRCOG and the different places we go to, and they're very responsive to when we're kind of going, "What about this? What about this?" And then finally, I'm like, there's a lot of things that were at WRCOG, and I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to send out my little council newsletter, but something kind of caught my interest. October 2nd is the California Clean Air Day. And as you know, we now have an urban forest plan and we have grants for all kinds of trees. I think it would be very, very cool if we could coordinate with WRCOG and do a tree planting ceremony on that day to celebrate the California Clean Air Day and to maybe use that as an opportunity for people to understand that because our trees are aging out and because of the Leprosyllis killing all the eucalyptus trees, I think it'd be a great opportunity, Chad, since that's your bailiwick. I think it might be really cool if we could do, nothing elaborate, but on October 2nd, do something that kicks off letting residents know that there's trees available, the kinds of trees they can plant, and maybe let's green up Norco. So that's something that, I don't know, do we agendize that, Andy, or do we just, or just talk to Chad about it?
We'll discuss.
All right. All right, anyway, that's all I have for today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, attended the board meeting for the Chino Basin Desalter. Thank you.
The, a couple of things I wanted to mention, if I could, a huge, huge shout-out to the Norco staff on National Night Out last night. What an amazing and successful event that was last night, so kudos to all of you for the hours of work. If you missed it last night and you didn't get your little Norco cowboy hat, I'm sure that they will have some of those at the Norco Fair, hopefully to pass out at the booth. It was quite the fashion statement last night, supporting Norco with those. And again, the number of booths and organizations that were there last night was up, the number of people that came to the event was up, the venue was nice, we had a breeze, and we were on grass and not on asphalt, so just all around, one of the best National Night Outs that I think we've had ever. So kudos to all involved in that. I was able to meet with our assemblywoman yesterday and talk about some of the things she's working on and how those relate to Norco, and then bring up some of the things that we're working on in Norco and some of our concerns. And we will be working on establishing a representative coming to our meetings again on a regular basis to give us some updates from Sacramento, so I'm looking forward to that in the coming months as well. So that will conclude my report. So we will move on to agenda item number two, which is our city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or audience request specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three on the agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. May I have a question?
Do we have any cards?
That was my next question. Do we have cards?
We have a card for two.
Two what?
We do have one card for 2C.
Okay.
Jeff Kayhan.
Okay.
And I was gonna pull 2C.
Okay, thank you. Any other items to be pulled? Okay, if none, we have a motion in a second.
Okay. Motion passes unanimous.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number three, which are items pulled from the consent calendar. We have item 2C, which is the approval of Tyler Technologies Incorporated New World Community Development Software Implementation and Service Agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated. And so, would we just get a brief report from Matt and then have the speaker?
Brian will provide a brief report.
Oh, you'll do it? Okay.
Actually, we're having Matt do it tonight.
His name was the first one on the list, so.
Yes.
Go, Matt.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item 2C is for the approval of the Tyler Technologies New World Community Development Software Implementation that we're working on with our Planning, Building and Safety Code Enforcement and Inspection Divisions. Over the past few years, the planning and community development departments have used the Ascela Permits Plus program, which is no longer supported by the manufacturer of that software. We went through extensive research and visited several other cities and municipalities to figure out what would be the best software to fit the needs for the city of Norco. Upon that, we discovered that Tyler Technologies New World Community Development Software would be the best selection for our current and future needs. Based off of that, the city has been with Tyler, not Tyler, but New World Community, New World ERP since 2002. So the software that we have used has been very reliable, and in 2015, Tyler Technologies bought out New World. During that time, these past few years, we have not had any major issues or any problems with downtime, and the software has been generally reliable. With that being said, the data is backed up. For disaster recovery purposes, we have had no issues with that. And that being said, over, there are 450 New World customers throughout the United States right now, and 113 are on this community development module. Of those 113, 11 of them are located in California. And just from a support perspective, too, each division in New World has their own development team, so if there's any issues or anything that related to support that comes up in the future, that team is specified to work on that particular area. Another addition to that would be the software being cloud-based, too, rather than onsite, meaning that we can have mobile inspections or pictures or anything related to a case or an inspection put into the file that can be shared with other departments as well. And with that, I will gladly take any questions.
Does the council have any questions of staff?
Matt, notwithstanding, this is not my field of expertise, as you well know. Have you worked with Tyler before? As far as what background, research? I just want to make sure there isn't anything out there that could snap up at us and bite us.
Right. So I've worked with Tyler in the past before in other cities as well, and generally, the products have been reliable. New World in itself is its own division as a division of Tyler Technologies. So that team that we've worked with for the past, how many years, since 2002, is the team that's working on this product. So that being said, Tyler Technologies has more than, they have a lot of products under their queue. New World falls into its own silo, so as I was saying with the development teams, if any issues come up, that team works specifically on that product. So some of the issues affecting other Tyler Technologies products should not affect this particular area.
Okay, so some of the bad rap that Tyler had from different government agencies or uses or whatever, is there's no nexus with those to this, or?
Not from, from my understanding, there isn't, and a lot of the problems that have come up have been related to the public safety sector rather than the ERP solution that we currently use.
And this is more for just community development, building safety, code enforcement?
Yes, correct.
Just to add to that, this is a suite from our financial software we currently use. So this is a module of that system that has been outstanding and very reliable to us. So you can add on to it. So as Matt mentioned, the silo, this is a separate entity from the public safety side of Tyler, and is, the platform used there is much diff, is not a New World platform. So we're actually operating in a whole different area of their company.
Good job, Matt.
Other questions of staff? All right, Mr. Kayhan.
Madam Mayor, Council and staff, thank you for allowing me. Basically, I wrote that email that you've all seen, and I just wanted to bring up that possibility with Tyler in my sphere of software development for my current company. You could call them a competitor, and we're in the court software space, and Tyler has had very, very bad outcomes and bad PR and everything else. So as soon as I saw the word Tyler Technologies, I might have jumped a little bit too quickly, but I appreciate Brian's response to my email where he laid out what he just mentioned, that it's a separate suite, that being from the New World, which Tyler simply bought, that, and as Matt kind of mentioned, it's more like a silo. So I feel much more comfortable and my concerns are alleviated that there's not much crossover between this division that you're gonna be purchasing and the court software that, where they've been having a lot of troubles. So I just wanted to bring it to make sure that there wasn't something that you guys might have not known about, but the fact that we've been using the software in the financial sphere, and this is just an additional module being added on, I feel comfortable that the relationship is gonna be safe and the city will be well-served. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. There's no other cards, correct? Okay. So at this time, I will bring it back to council for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 2C.
Please vote.
All right, thank you. Moving to item number four, which is public comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond on comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comments. Do we have any cards?
Yes, we have two cards. The first one is JT Guerrillo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff. As a Norco resident, I know that one of our own is fighting a tough battle, and I would like to have hope that we would have some sort of recognition for the great work Kathy Azvedo has done. She has been a good steward for this town and a lifestyle enhancer of horsemanship and very active in the equestrian lifestyle. I would like to see something fitting of her love for this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Bill Naylor.
Evening, Council and Mayor. I've kind of gotten on my high horse, appropriate for Norco, right? And I ride the trails here in town an awful lot, and I try to observe things and make minor corrections and help with different ideas. The city was able to go and get Major R approved last year, and we're about ready to start seeing some revenue being, coming in later. This month, you'll be getting some proposals from the Major R Committee. I did present this comment, a couple of comments, to the Major R Committee, as I also did the Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission, and I really want you to think in long-term on this. I know the proposals coming from Major R is, they're gonna be proposing approximately a million dollars' worth of work to be done on trails within the city for different projects from Parks and Recreation to the streets and trails and things like that. I've had several issues that I know I have submitted to the code enforcement officer about issues on the trails, and in most cases, they seem to not go very far. I'm concerned that we, if we're going to be making expenditures, like what we're talking about this year, maybe about a million dollars, and in the future years, maybe another half million here and a half million there, that we are not throwing that money away. I would really like to see the city get behind code enforcement and be able to empower them to go after property owners that are not maintaining the trail. We know it's the city's responsibility for the DG and the fencing, but the weeds and things in some of these places on some of these blocks is really getting out of hand, and we really need to be doing something about it. And I've been asking the commissions and things to look at the codes and see if they need to be enforced or beefed up a little bit, but I also know that some of it comes down from council down through staff to, nobody wants sometimes to have to be forced to do something. And I know that it's always a pain to, you get a constituent saying, "Hey, can I, what can you do to help me here?" But we really need to take care of it. It's not just a hazard on the trail, it's also property values that are decreased, so I'm really wanting you to think about it. You may even want to consider beefing up your code enforcement to two full-time officers instead of one full-time and a part-time. That's my concern, and I just want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further speaker cards?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number five, which are discussion and action items. Just a reminder, the order of presentation and discussion for items this evening, we'll have a staff report and presentation. Council will be able to ask questions of staff. We'll have public speakers in favor, against, and neutral. Council discussion and council action. Our first item, A, is Western Community Energy Update, and we will have the beginning of our report from our our report from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you recall, about a year ago, the city council approved for the city to join Western Community Energy. Western Community Energy is a joint powers authority that was formed for the purpose of implementing Community Choice Aggregation Program. And currently, that JPA consists of several cities in Western Riverside County. The Community Choice Aggregation Program, the purpose of it is to implement a program that allows consumers of electricity here in the city of Norco to have a choice as to who provides them electricity. Currently, there is only one source, and that is the Southern California Edison. Of course, the process of implementing that Community Choice Aggregation Program is a long process. However, Western Community Energy has been doing a lot of work towards the steps necessary to implement that choice for consumers here in the city of Norco. Here this evening is the WRCO executive director, Rick Bishop, and a couple of his staff to provide the city council and the residents of Norco with an update regarding where we are in the process of implementing that choice for residents here in Norco.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, city manager's staff, members of the audience. I'm Rick Bishop. I'm the executive director of the Western Riverside Council of Governments. I also serve as a general manager for Western Community Energy, a separate JPA from WRCO, which the city is a member. And so we'd like to provide you with an update. I wanted to let you know that we are not going to be outdone by waste management and RCTC showing videos. We brought our own video, so we wanted to run that real quickly for you.
Norco residents will soon have a choice on how to power up their home or business. A new program, Western Community Energy, gives us a choice in how we get our electricity. Using existing transmission lines, this program gives Norco local control over rates and the kind of energy we receive. A recent survey found that 64% of county voters support participation in Western Community Energy. There's no risk to residents who can opt in or out of the program at any time. We all want lower rates and a choice for cleaner energy. Western Community Energy gives Norco and other cities in Riverside County control over where and how we get our electricity.
So there you go, short and sweet. As I go through the presentation, I did want to acknowledge council member Hoffman and the city manager. They've been your representatives participating as we've been very deliberately moving through the development of this program. We purposely combined our meetings so that we could have meetings of the board members and the city managers together, so that we can make sure that we're dealing with the technical and policy aspects of the program in a comprehensive manner. But just basically, just to give you an overview and let you know where we are, what WCE is, Western Community Energy, as Andy mentioned and is also articulated in your staff report, this is simply a program that would provide your residents and your businesses with a choice. It's a totally voluntary program with regard to where they're getting their energy from. Currently, as the city manager said, your energy comes from one source, and that's Southern California Edison. And CCAs, which are referred to as Community Choice Aggregation Programs, have been forming fairly rapidly in the state of California because they do provide another option for residents, typically providing energy at rates that are lower than are provided by the utility provider. And in many cases, residents want a greener mix in energy, and the CCAs also are able to do that as well. In fact, when we started this program out, and we're here first in the city of Norco and some of the other cities, we were talking about very few CCAs that were actually in the process of being implemented. And look where we are now, just a couple of years later, we've gone from four CCAs that are serving 30 jurisdictions in the state, to right now, we've got 19 CCAs serving 152 jurisdictions in the state. And interestingly enough, a number of additional CCAs are approved for launch during this next year, which will certainly up the number of jurisdictions that are providing energy in California to 165. And that's in addition to the 60 jurisdictions that are already serving as utilities in the state of California. So the reason we think this is happening is that CCAs are meeting the objectives that have been set by their boards and the expectations of consumers. Our goals have been articulated early on by our board. They're really simple. We wanted to offer energy at a 35% renewable rate as a default that would comply with California state law and requirements in the future. We also wanted to make sure that we're able to provide that rate, that energy at a discount to the energy provided by Southern California Edison, also, which is consistent with a number of other CCAs. We found that a number of residents, if given the option of actually paying more for 100% renewable energy, they'll take it, and so that's also provided as an option for those businesses and residents that are interested in 100% renewable energy. Building up a reserve is important to our board as well, and so we've been able to incorporate that into our business plan. And all in all, the intent is to launch the CCA in the summer of 2020, about a year from now. So we're about a year into this process from a formal standpoint with regard to the formation of the CCA, and we're about a year out from being able to launch. We continually update our pro formas to take a look at our projected energy savings that would be provided to residents and businesses for those jurisdictions that are participants. And we're still sticking at around 2% savings, and this is using a number of conservative assumptions, so it certainly wouldn't surprise us if the savings was actually higher once we get to that launching point. But that comes to about a little over half a million dollars a year that are money saved to your residents and businesses for doing absolutely nothing, just for getting their energy, just like they do now. They have to do nothing to get it. So we think that's a pretty, pretty easy program to understand and a pretty easy benefit, putting money back in the pockets of your residents to do that. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but this is just intended to kind of let you know how deliberate our process has been. In many cases, we have been meeting, and my apologies to board member Hoffman and to Andy, on a every-other-week basis, as we've been moving through to try to put together documents for appropriate timely submission to entities such as the California Public Utilities Commission, and also developing our own in-house policies and making sure that we're all on track to have a process that is transparent and is going to achieve the objectives that we've set. In the city of Norco specifically, we have been starting our outreach to your residents and to your businesses, including setting up a booth at last night's National Night Out, and I think a number of you might have had a chance to see the booth or stop by. We also had a good opportunity to talk with residents and businesses, just to start to inform them of this. And as much as we've always thought that CCAs are a good idea, one thing that has been lacking in our discussions is what residents think about CCAs. And so we were able to have a survey conducted within the jurisdictions that are members of the CCA, and just consider that nobody knows anything about this, and just basically a cold call question, do you support participating? We found in the city of Norco, about 53% said, yeah, they think it's a good idea. Maybe what was more interesting to me anyways, rather than the number of residents that thought, based on just the first question, that they think this is a good idea, is how few residents thought that it's not a good idea. So when you look at a polling and you see only about, in this case, 9% saying they don't think it's a good idea, what we zeroed in on is the next number, which is 38% say they're unsure. And that's important, because we found, just in the survey, we started the survey by just asking the question, saying, this entity will do this for you, do you support or oppose? It started with 53% support. But then, after the survey was done and the survey participants were a little bit better informed about the benefits, the question was asked again, we found that the number actually went up. So countywide, we started with 58% said, at first glance, they support it, and then after they went through some questions, we asked the question again, it went up to 64%. So that leads us to believe that that 38%, if you just took half of that, which we don't think is going to happen, but if you just basically said of the 38% that are unsure, if half of them said they support and half of them said they oppose, well now that support number goes up to about 70%. And I find that to be really, really a strong number, especially when you consider the sales tax measure that was approved here in the city by your residents. I think it was about 57% that approved it, which is really quite good, and you should be congratulated for that. But unfortunately, for the 43% that voted against it, they still have to pay the tax. Now, what's interesting about WCE and the opportunity to participate in a Community Choice Aggregation Program is when you'll take a look at these numbers, for those folks that are opposed to it, they don't have to participate. It's a completely voluntary program. So making it available to those that want to enjoy the benefits of lower energy costs and perhaps renewable energy, it starts to look really promising and really strong. So what's next? As we're moving ahead, we're in the process right now of actually starting to purchase power, power that would be used and allocated to your residents and businesses. During the fall of this year, we'll be meeting with our board to take a look at designing and setting rates for the residents to achieve the objectives that were set forth earlier. We'll start the process of providing notification to the residents and businesses. State law requires us to do that a few times before launch, and then if all goes well, we're looking at a summer launch to residents of Norco and the other jurisdictions within Western Riverside County. So we are really excited that we're starting to move this thing forward. The fact that other CCAs throughout the state have met and have exceeded the goals that they've set really give us a lot of comfort, because this is one of the few programs that we've put together in a long time where we're not striking out on our own and trying to develop something from scratch. We've got a really good track record to go on, and so we're confident in talking with these other CCAs that we've been able to promote the things that they've done well and avoid the things where they found that they had pitfalls. And so we've been able to learn from their mistakes as we move ahead with our program. So that's just a brief update for you. I certainly would defer to council member Hoffman or the city manager, or if they have any additional comments. I also wanted to introduce Barbara Sprunhauer. She's our deputy executive director, and she's in charge of CCA development. And also Tyler Masters, one of our program managers. They're basically the ones that are doing all the detailed work, and we couldn't be there without them. And before I say anything else, I wanted to give a shout out to Kathy. She is a longtime member representing the city of Norco on WRCO, and Kathy, we are a much better agency because of your participation. So it's great to see you.
All right, does counsel have any questions? No questions? Do we have any cards?
There are no speaker cards.
Okay. We'll bring it back to counsel for discussion and action. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I start that off? I can't. One of the things, we're at a position now as a city that we're going to get into the financial obligations, and that is one of the reasons why it's coming back to counsel. As you read on the fiscal impact, right there, it states that we have the potential, you know, there, that's essentially where we're at on this, in this matter. And Rick did a good job explaining what has been going on with the WCE. I appreciate all the work that they put into this thing to make it. I was very apprehensive when it first started, that's why I didn't mind being on the board, I wanted to see what it really was. The 2% is a very conservative number, we've kept it that way, because it's a realistic number that can be easily met, I believe, on the savings of the customers after going through all the data. So, and that was done on purpose, so that we wouldn't get up a higher number than that meet our goal. So I want you to know that for our residents there, it is cost-effective to them if we as a city continue being part of the WCE, just to let you know. I have confidence in the board of directors there, and then along with the staff, to do this thing right, along with all the, what are we, what are our buyers called? The group that buys the power for us, our consultants out there that are doing this. I have, like I said, I learned a lot from this last year, so I do have some faith in this, so that's my part of it. Thank you.
Any other comments from counsel?
Well, I'm his alternate, and I've kind of been out of the process, but I did have the opportunity to go up north and learn a lot about the project. I had a lot of questions. Couple of things, one, I have great faith in the staff to implement the program. Two, it's all voluntary, so I think that it's a pretty good deal. As time has gone on, I was there, I think, when there were four people that were running the operations, and I have to kind of support the idea that more and more constituencies are jumping on board this. I also feel that the 2% is actually very conservative, but more than anything, I'm not just blowing smoke, I have great faith in the staff to implement this. So I personally, and you guys will do what you'll do, but I think we need to continue on this path, for me.
There's anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Oh, did you? Oh, yeah. Okay. Motion to receive and file, and it's been seconded.
Please vote.
All right, very good. Moving on to item 5B, the proposed purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions between the city and RBE, and our report will be from our city attorney.
Thank you. This, what you have on the agenda before you is a proposed purchase and sale agreement between RBE and the city for property that was formerly owned by the redevelopment agency. As you'll perhaps recall, the redevelopment agency owned 7.31 acres located generally at River Road and Second Street. The RDA, when it was dissolved in 2012, was required to dispose of that property. The short-term disposal was to have a transfer to the city. City still has a disposal obligation. The property is located adjacent to 15, approximately 15 acres owned by RBE. One of the difficulties with this, for those of you who've been around for a while, the discussion over the development and sale of this property has been ongoing since 2006 or '07. There have been many attempts to find some economically viable means of developing the joint properties, all of which to date have been unsuccessful. One of the difficulties for the city, if, as the standalone owner of the property, is that the city's property, even though it is 7.31 acres, is very difficult to develop absent the combined development of the adjacent 15 acres due to the location of the property and access. The, how do I say this? The, this particular proposal, purchase and sale agreement proposal, has been under discussion with the city council, for those of you who've looked at the closed session agendas for the past several years. The project that is the developer, conceptually is put forward as the project he believes will be economically viable, has been discussed by the council over the past probably six months or more. One thing that I need to make abundantly clear is that the purchase and sale agreement does not approve a project. The city council has not even considered a project. There's been no project application submitted. It will go, assuming that it is submitted, it will go through all of the process, the planning commission, streets and trails, city council, the SEQA process, tentative map, site development plans, lots of public input, that's the intention. The purpose of this is to set basically a price for the city to convey its property if the development is ultimately approved, and only if it's ultimately approved. This is also an escrow agreement, in the sense that there will be an escrow opened when the purchase and sale agreement is signed, but it will not close unless and until a project, which is acceptable to the developer, might not even be this one, is approved ultimately by the city council and grading permits are prepared to be issued. There's no real accurate estimate of how long that process will be, but I can't imagine it's going to be less than a year, year and a half. The escrow agreement provides that this escrow will close no later than five years from the date of execution of the project. It's kind of not much different than a developer in, dealing with other than a city, wants to buy land, goes to the landowner and says, I'll give you X amount of dollars for it, but the contingency is that before I pay you any money, I have to get an approved project. And so he goes through the city process to get an approved project, and then escrow closes and money changes hands. In this case, the city has the additional luxury of having control over the project. over the project. Again, there's no obligation in this agreement for RBE to present what is the conceptual project. They could overnight say, gee, you know, we think something different ought to go there and we want to massage it. That, I don't believe is likely to occur, but it's theoretically possible. The key is only that once they get a project which is approved, that they believe is economically viable for them, that there's any obligation to close the escrow and pay the city money. If there's never any deal, if the planning commission, the city council deny the project or modify it in a way that the developer can't do it, everything's off the table. There's no obligation on either party's part and no money changes hands, obviously, and are back to the drawing table. Like I said, the process actually is fairly simple. The purchase and sale agreement signed and executed, the purchase price, in this case, is, and this will give you some idea of the challenges that the city has faced with this property. The purchase price consists of the one independent third-party most recent appraisal price, which is $305,000. A price in that ballpark has never been acceptable to the council. That's been one of the problems. But in addition to the $305,000, the developer will pay $3,295,000 for a total consideration of $3.6 million. The additional funds are in the form of development agreement fees, which will go to the city's general fund. Again, no obligation for anybody, for the developer to pay money for the property until there is an approved project ready for, to be graded, again, which will take some significant amount of time, if it ever happens. And there's no obligation for the city to approve what are referred to in this agreement as discretionary approvals, which are all the things that are subject to the public hearing, the tentative map, the development agreement, the site development plan, a whole variety of other approvals. And it obviously has to go through all the commissions and all the public process to get there. So, bottom line, this is, if developer proposes a project which is ultimately successful and with, approved by the city, developer then has the opportunity to purchase the property for the $3.6 million total. I'm sure that they're, well, I'm not sure. I hope they're not, but there are probably questions you might still have. If you don't, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Does Council have any questions of staff?
I do.
So, work with me, Mr. John, a little bit. In the recitals, page one, item B, we talk about RBE and the project which, which may consist of, and then the acreage, RBE may apply.
Yep.
So, let's just stay with, you know, a bunch of maybes.
Mm-hmm.
That anywhere in this agreement that protects the city, it seems like we're basing this on a project, okay? Not a concept, but that RBE will follow through with a project.
Yes. RBE, before they're obligated to make payment to the city, needs to have a project which is approved by the city.
So, where?
It's not necessarily, I mean, it will all, in all likelihood, be something, it will be, how do I say this, that there will be a project, something like what's defined in that recital presented to the city. And I would expect that that's the, something like that will be one that goes down the line. But if, day after tomorrow, the law changes and, or the tax law changes, which is always in this country, pretty likely, if developer proposes a project other than this and it's not acceptable to the city, then the city has no obligation to sell the property and developer obviously has no obligation to pay.
All right. So, within this...
That's why, you pointed out correctly, it was intended to be written that way. The words contemplating and potential.
Right.
And may.
Okay. So, what, understanding from the city's standpoint, a project would be beneficial for us, okay?
Okay.
That we're in this agreement if RBE wants to just sell the property, okay, with or without entitlements.
Well, they don't have any...
They have the ability to say, you know what, I'm picking this dirt up from the city for $11 a square foot. I can peddle it for 20.
Okay.
And they can just...
Yeah, the answer is they're not picking it up.
Sell it without a project.
Yeah, they're not picking it up for $11 a square foot. They don't get title to it until they pay $3.6 million.
I stand corrected. Our price is $11.30 a square foot. But could they just sell it outright?
The only way...
Without a project, to another developer?
No, because there isn't any obligation for them, nor any obligation for the city, to accept the money and sell the property to them until they have their entitlements, all the discretionary approvals. If you're asking me, could they theoretically sell something that by now they've, you know, given the fact that they've gone through the development process and they now have entitlements and graded it, maybe, could they sell that to another developer? Yeah, it's their property. I mean, that's theoretically. Yes, somebody else would develop it, but they would pay not $3.6 million for it presumably, but pay the $15 million in addition the developer has in it. But yes, it's not, we don't have, it's unconstitutional for us to prevent somebody from selling property which they own. And we got, and we got the price we thought was fair.
But we're basing that on, that there'll be a project. And that, I think, is the benefit for the city.
Yeah. And if there is not a project, meaning we don't approve it, then this is null and void. There's no deal.
That part I understand.
The only way that there's any potential for anybody other than RBE developing it is after they get approvals and grading permits, I guess theoretically selling it to a third-party developer who developed whatever project the city had determined was beneficial on that site and approved.
And the one thing, I know you had listed, you know, all the different process commissions, whatever, but this would also have to go through a zone change on the project?
No. 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 This project, as it's currently proposed, remember, there's not a project. Nothing's been submitted. But for the sake of discussion, let's assume that it is, that this is the project. No, the existing zoning permits this project.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't. How, there's a residential element with it.
I'll point to Steve. It's permitted under the existing zone.
Yeah. Density housing for seniors is a permitted use with approval of a conditional use permit.
In a commercial zone?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that had some impact, I think, on whether or not they wanted to proceed.
Just like the two complexes south of City Hall. They're in a commercial zone.
That's my questions for now.
Council have other questions of staff? No? All right. We're going to go ahead and go to cards on the matter. Do we have any cards?
Yes, we have one. Speaker card, Lynda Dixon.
You know, I've read this purchase agreement over all 25 pages many, many times. I have a lot of heartburn and I cannot get through it in three minutes. Since when, why cannot we have just a regular sale of this property? The property is zone commercial. The developer would have then the opportunity to either put forth a project on a commercial basis or residential. Why can't we just come forth and have a regular sale? Why does it have to be contingent on a concept or a project that has not been put forth? I know what you're saying, John, but I also know all the legalese, and my husband and I have been involved in many, many residential and commercial real estate purchases over the years. There is 25 pages of baloney. I think that we... Pardon?
We refer to it as legalese. We like that.
Well, you know, I think this is holding the city hostage. And I'm all for the city and I'm all for a developer. I have no problem with this being developed, but I do have a problem with this purchase agreement. I do not think that it should be approved tonight. I think you really need to go back and simplify the process. I think just a regular sale. I've been involved with this, and Mr. Jacobson knows this, and you all know this, since the early 2000s. And we've gone through, from one extreme to the other on this. I know he wants the property. I have no problem with him purchasing the property, but I do have a major heartbreak, a heartburn with many items in this, these 25 pages of this sale agreement. And you can say what you want, John, but I'm really, really surprised that you, as a representative of this city, would concur with an agreement like this. Let's just get it done right so that both parties can come to the table and it not lean in favor of one over the other, which it does here. Let's look out for our city. That is a prime piece of property that is one of the last in this city to be developed other than the egg ranch. So, let's start at ground zero right now and let's do it right. And let's do it in a way that's going to help our city. We need this. I don't know that I'm going to agree with any project that's put forth, but as far as this agreement, let's get it simplified. Let's just do it. Not everything has to be legalese and complicated. Thank you.
Are there any other cards?
There are no further speakers.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and bring back up to Council for discussion. Councilman Hannah.
John, I couldn't hear you there a while ago. Did you say just the purchase agreement here, that, and we don't have to do a zone change? Is that what you're...
No, there's no zone change required. It's a permitted use, subject to conditioning is permit. Obviously, that goes to the planning commission, the city council, in a public hearing. But, no, there's no zone change.
Okay.
Because it's senior housing.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Other Council discussion?
Actually, I shouldn't make, I said because it's senior housing. There's actually no proposal before the city. So, it theoretically is, would be senior housing. But if it wasn't, then they needed zone change or, but, but the conceptual project is subject, is permitted in the zone.
Any other discussion from Council? So, real quick. So, reading through the purchase and sale agreement and the escrow instructions, I also had the perception that this was basically something that was already determined to be done and that, I don't think of how to word this appropriately. My perception was that, upon reading this, that a lot of this was kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. And that in my experiences in what little we've done as far as development since I've been on Council, I was having a hard time processing what was going on as far as the documents were concerned. In further discussion with Mr. Harper, it is my understanding that basically the process is in place of coming up with a project proposal, going to the planning commission, going through all the steps of the public hearing and all of that is still in place. And that this particular document is talking about a purchase of property being made by RBE from the city. The difference, and I think the hang-up and where I understand, now that I didn't understand earlier, and again, it's because of my sphere of knowledge and what I have experience in. Most of us are experienced in having a purchase and sale of a house where you have a 30 or a 40 or 45-day escrow. Things get cleaned up and then the sale is finalized. It is my understanding with this particular purchase and sale agreement that the escrow is being extended so that the process is in place for project proposals, public hearings, planning commission meetings, city council meetings, all take place during this escrow period. And that the purchase is finalized after all of these hearings and everything take place so that neither the city nor the developer are on the hook for something that's not going, has the potential to not work out, if that makes sense. And so, my concern in the way this has been put forward is that the escrow agreement in terms of the length and the wordiness and some of the items that are discussed, as far as like a project name and down to details on acreage and things, I feel like if those items weren't there, that we probably would have had a little bit more clarity and not had the frustration of, well, here we have a whole thing coming before us already and it makes, it gives the perception that all of this is a done deal. And that's not the case. And so, from my perspective, I want residents to understand that we're extending an escrow period so that, and again, my opinion, neither party is going to get burned if the planning commission decides to not approve a project. Or, you know, RBE comes forward and says, oh, well, now that, you know, planning commission maybe said X, Y, and Z, it's not going to financially work out for us. And so, people can walk away without financial injury, so to speak, from the potential that exists on the merging or the sale of this property. And so, is that...
Yeah, that's right.
Clear and correct?
To me, yes.
Okay.
And I might make one comment on what Lynda suggested, partly because you have to remember, we've been involved with trying to get rid of this, to sell this property for many, many years. I mean, I remember Lynda coming to planning commission meeting and yelling about, "What? Low and modern income housing? You can't put that there." A long time, long time. And the city's always primary interest has been to sell the property, period.
The price.
Do exactly what you suggest. And we've been trying to do that in every conceivable way. And we've never reached a point where the price that was offered, and to some extent, we are not held hostage, but we're almost in this together because the, all the property around us that provides access is owned by the one who wants to develop it. So, we've never been able to, I mean, as recently as six months ago, to come close to a price that was acceptable to the city. This price is more than three times the highest price offered to date. And you can look at it as this, the offer was really this. This is what RBE says. Here's my offer to purchase your property. If you approve this project so that I can build it, I'll pay you $3.6 million instead of what I was going to pay before. That's my offer. And the city said, okay, price is right, but you know as a matter of law that we couldn't approve a project, especially one that hasn't been even submitted, without going through the process. And RBE says, I understand that. I'm willing to take that risk. And that's why the purchase and sale agreement is complicated because it talks about all the discretionary approvals and what happens if they don't happen. But they are discretionary, meaning within the city's discretionary right to say yes or no. And, I mean, I would hope that, just in the best interest of the city, that we have a project that's built out there, whatever it might be, that the... project that's built out there, whatever it might be, that the neighbors are happy and the city's happy. That's the whole idea. But it's possible that won't happen, in which case this has kind of given it last best shot. And then we're back in the market of hoping that the city council is willing to accept the appraised price of $305,000. Remember, it has flood control problems and access problems, and it's surrounded by property others people own. The appraisers are telling us it's just not worth what we want to get for it. And I'm not an appraiser, so we're not second guessing them. But in any case, instead of $305,000, if this actually happens, going to get $3.6 million. Well, we don't make... No, no, they... It doesn't say that, but, I mean, it doesn't. But what they're going to do is just like any other development project, is they're going to submit a project to the city, and the city go through all the plan checking things and all the things it normally does with any other project. It'll go to planning commission, and the planning commission can put conditions on it, whatever they think's appropriate. It's just like any other development project. That, I mean, we... Pardon me?
Well, just as a friendly reminder, public comment is over.
Yeah, I know.
So please remember.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Newton.
John, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Does the possibility exist to... My concern is the perception that even though we're not, we're approving a concept, that does the possibility exist that this agreement could go back to you to be massaged and get away from the attached concept drawings and the concept of the project?
I mean...
That this agreement needs further work?
Theoretically, except, anything's a possibility. But again, as I understand the offer from the developer, it's a project like this is, provides him the financial incentive to be able to offer $3.6 million instead of the money that's been offered to this point. And again, I'm not sure what is on page two, but the parts that I'm interested in page two said the parties acknowledge and agree the city is not precommitting, cannot pre-commit to any change in the physical environment surrounding the project until there's compliance with SEQA. And the city can't issue discretionary approvals, if at all.
So, John, my question is, did you just answer my question, or are you just now going to Linda's question?
No, I answered yours.
Oh, I didn't know we were done. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. The answer is, I mean, you heard what I said. The answer is theoretically, yes. That, I mean, anything's possible, that we can go back to the developer and figure a way of taking out the concept. But, there's always the but. The but is that in order for the developer to agree to pay, there's going to have to be an approved project prior to writing the check. And I think that we all thought that in the interest of transparency and providing more information to the public, that some specific project, which was what was in the developer's mind, would be more helpful than less than saying, okay, developer is going to propose a project, and then depending on what that project is, at the end, we're gonna figure out whether or not he thinks it's gonna pencil out. Just may seem to make more sense, since I believe as a practical matter, that's what he's gonna propose. You're right, it is a chicken and the egg problem and a perception problem. That's why, I mean, it says many more times than once in this and in the staff report that this is, we can't commit. We can't commit legally, and city council has never committed to this project as it's designed or any other project. And so, yes, we could take that out, but it's, there's still gonna be a big hole, which is gonna say there will be a project. And then the question is, oh, well, you know, what project have you already approved that you're not telling us about? But we can certainly do that. And I apologize if you thought that I was giving you a short shrift, because I was... Just because the Cubs won.
Can you finish?
Yes.
Other comments or discussion from council?
I'll just say one other thing, like the elephant in the room. I think we're a little gun shy because of things that have been posted on social media. And I'll tell you right now, I'm not one to make my decisions based on posts on social media. And so do developers put out pretty pictures and have grandiose ideas about vacant properties in Norco? Absolutely. Absolutely, they do. They're trying to sell land. They're trying to sell ideas, and they're trying to do that to people that have money that are willing to move a business or meet demands or whatever the case may be. And so I honestly believe that this discussion has the potential to not be as intense as it probably is right now, if it weren't for a few things that were put on social media in the last couple of weeks. And so, and that's fine with that. Again, I would remind us that it's not a public comment at this time, so...
Can I make one very short additional comment?
Yes.
Going back to kind of to Greg's question, why the conceptual... That I think also that the developer who proposed this wanted to find out whether or not the project that they were most likely to propose was absolutely unacceptable to city council. And the way that would have occurred is making this proposal, drafting a purchase and sale agreement, and having the council say, hell, no. So this isn't a commitment to that project, but at least you've looked at something, and I think it was an attempt on the part of the developer to show you something that fitted with zoning and might not be unacceptable to you.
I'll add my two cents worth. Since I came on the council, this property's been bannered by us in closed session, what to do. Andy, what was our bid one time for this property? $100,000 or just nothing, it was peanuts?
Yeah.
And the appraisal that was done, one was high, one was low, one didn't make any sense. And like I said, since I've been on council, this is kind of where, I mean, there have been all kinds of concepts written about this property, what's gonna happen to it. Big commercial center, little commercial center, no commercial center, commercial, residential, whatever you want to put there. But somehow or another, we're back to just, we have a property that we can't do anything with because it's on a flood control, we're landlocked on the other one. And to me, after almost, for over four years on this council, this is actually one of the better, at least, prices we've gotten for this that I've seen. So we're not gonna develop it as a city. I mean, we can't even get to it, other than build our own road. And Chad's not gonna build a road because he's not gonna let his measure yard money go for that. So somebody else build the road. So, Madam Mayor, I'm ready to vote on this thing, if the rest of the council wanna go for it.
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I'm extremely sensitive to the people that live neighboring to this, and so I really listen hard. And I'm trying to find that phrase. I agree a lot with what the mayor said. I agree with what Ted said, and I've been on this project forever. There's some things, and even though there's no project before, some of the things we've discussed, I wanna... We have some things that are pressing us. One, we have a high-density requirement that's being shoved down our throats. So we're trying to find a way to comply to that so they don't begin to eat away at the internal large lots within our city. That is a reality. And we have a project that really isn't a project before us. This is just an agreement. And I'm trying to find where we give up any rights once we do this. And as I read this, I actually had the opposite until I got the text. I thought, wow, this is pretty good. But I'm not a lawyer. But then it gave me pause, and so I went through and I thought, okay, so I can see why there might be some misunderstandings. But what's most important to me is if we agree to this, there's a super-long escrow in which the people of Norco are going to have the opportunity to say, no, 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 and which we will be able to say, no, no, no. Planning commission will be able to say, no, no, no. And at a certain point, if we say, no, no, we can just do this and we can walk away. I do take exception with what the city attorney said when he said, we're trying to get rid of the property. This is prime real estate.
Yes, no, we're statutory obligated to dispose of the...
Shut up. Be quiet. And the point is, is that like Ted, we have been trying to figure out something. And one of the things that I want to directly assure Linda of, everything possible is gonna be done to make sure that this project does not impact your street. And the nice thing is, is that in talking with the developer, he's very clear on that. His representative is very clear on that. And so I'm not as nervous about this agreement, where the real battle for me is gonna come in. And I really hope that everybody who lives in Norco and looks at this project will come before us and just really voice their opinions. I don't personally see the problem with this agreement. I don't think that if we sign this and move forward, that it's going to be, that we're selling out any rights. For me, the real battle, again, to repeat myself, I apologize, is it's going to be, as we move forward, I want to do a development that serves your street specifically. I want to do a development that serves Norco's Sacramento boondoggle. And it might be nice to create a complex in which you, if, I mean, for me, I'm looking for a senior complex. I mean, I'll say it right there, I'm looking for one. But one of the things I always hear about, we have two very successful ones in Norco. I'm looking for one where people who can't afford their large properties in Amara, and they can afford them, they just can't keep them up anymore, have a place that they can continue to live in Norco. Those are really the three things I'm trying to do. And I want them to fix all those streets. So that's what I'm looking for. So I totally get what you're saying, but I'm just a little nervous. I kind of, I'm worried about pushing this down the road. And I hope you understand. So that's all I have to say, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion from council?
Just a last comment, hopefully, that, you know, part of my concern, we can all say, yeah, we've all been involved with this. And I was on planning commission when Nick's barber shop had to move and it was gonna be a fresh and easy, so I'm very familiar with this. But when my gut tells me, and I'm comfortable with this, okay, that, and in some of the comments, it's almost like we're playing into this fear that the way this is written, 549 residential units. We go through this process, two years from now, and planning commission or whoever goes, wow, that's pretty intense. And, you know, you need to reduce it down to 400 units. Nope, I'm gonna walk away. I have that ability. And then all of a sudden, we're back into this, oh, my gosh, the state's gonna come after us. Oh, my gosh, we can't do anything with this property. We fall back into square one. That's, so that's kind of what my gut's telling me, that, you know, we shouldn't play any fear. There's a way to massage this to maybe alleviate that. And then, like I said, it always goes back to my gut feeling of attorneys and developers, what possibly could go wrong? Okay? And so I'm just, I like the project. I like the idea of...
Developers and politicians, or...
Yeah, I'll go with that, too. But it's, there's gotta be a way to kind of reword it, rework it, massage it, so that I feel that we're protected and protected down the line also. And I understand everybody else's opinions and comments.
As you suggested, the ultimate outcome could be walking away. And I don't think that there's any way that we're gonna protect us or them from walking away. And we will be back exactly where we are now. Hopefully, it starts through the process and gets to the planning commission. Planning commission says 400 units. Developer has at that point the right to say, yeah, let me, okay, that'll work. But also has the right to say, I can't move forward with this. Hopefully, that's sooner rather than later.
Respond to one thing. People better wake up. They better wake up. I go to these meetings, I know what Sacramento's trying to do to us. This isn't fear tactics. Wake up. I mean, you know what? You can laugh about it, you can think it's funny, you can deride people, but the truth of the matter is, you have Sacramento that looks at Norco, they don't even think we belong in these large lots. They think, wow, why do you live on all this land? What's wrong with you people? And that is the truth. I go to those meetings. We all went to a meeting where we were told that's exactly what they want to do, while cutting out their areas. So if we as Norco don't wake up and try to figure out ways to make this work, you can call it fear. I call it being smart. So, I mean, otherwise, you're gonna have apartment buildings next door to you inside Norco. Now, if you want to postpone this, fine, go ahead and do it. But don't give people the BS that they shouldn't be nervous about this. I'm trying to tell you straight. I am your representative that is hearing all of this. So you know what? If you're not gonna go to this damn meetings, and I am, don't sit there and mislead people by saying, oh, I don't want to go by fear. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be mad at you, Greg, but the truth of the matter is, wake up. If you guys want to postpone this, do a, move it forward, do it so that it is more comfortable for residents. I am totally behind that. But the truth of the matter is, I know what this document says. But don't tell me that we don't have to wake up. You want to go ahead, and I mean, I'll make a motion to move this forward, to move it to the next meeting, let John massage it. I'm totally fine with that. But I'm real tired of people making up crap inside their minds.
I got a comment before we do anything. I, too, thought that this was a little strange to come in with all this stuff on the staff report and everything until I talked to Andy about it. But it is, the one place there does get a little confusing and everything, but then after John explained it, that all it is is a sales agreement, and we don't have to do anything until they do bring a project that has to go through all the commissions and come to us. And I kind of understand now that, what they're saying, so that's all I got, Madam Mayor.
Is there any other discussion? A motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Make a motion.
It wasn't seconded.
Make a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions between the city and the RBE for Norco JFHA 1 LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions between the city and RBE Norco JFH 1 LLC.
Please vote.
All right, moving on to item number six, which are our public hearings. Just a reminder, the order for public hearings are as follows. We'll have a staff report and presentation, council questions of staff. I'll open the public hearing. We'll have our speakers in favor, against, or neutral. We'll close the public... We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion, and then council action. So our first public hearing is confirming the report of costs for abatement of weeds and hazardous vegetation as a public nuisance and imposing special assessment liens on vacant parcels within the city. And that will be, Chief Lane, you're up.
Howdy.
Howdy.
Madam Mayor, council, staff, and the community. You said it well, the item before you tonight is seeking the authority to impose liens for those properties, vacant parcels, within the city that Warren Brothers abated, yet the owners have not paid. The last date of pay was today. The statistics for the year, we had 41 noncompliant vacant parcels and 41 citations issued for the first time, at $250 apiece after the 30-day grace period, if you will. Seventeen of those properties were abated by Warrenton Brothers, 24 abated after the citation but before Warren Brothers arrived. Again, owners have until today, or had until today, to pay the cost. And the cost of the abatement to the city for those 17 lots was $6,323, just for the abatement service itself. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Does council have any questions, or the chief?
I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, the Warren Brothers, that's your contracted personnel to do that?
It is.
And I'm curious, because some of our property owners in town that don't necessarily get the abatement letters and things like that, they're always looking for a contractor to do that weed removal. Do you offer, do they offer their services outside of your contracted rate? Or do they have a rate? I'm just trying to find a way for some of the residents to call other people to do their weeds, if they have a rate, standard rate that they apply.
I don't know their standard rate, where they are for a higher contractor outside of our rate. I know they abate other parcels in the city for our residents, outside of doing it in compliance, if you will, instead of us doing it for them, because that costs double, so...
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
The cheapest mode is for them to hire them directly.
Okay, so, but do we have a contact, so we can give our residents that number for their...
For Warren Brothers.
If you can, if you can get available to us sometime for them, so we can put it on the website if you want, or a list of contractors that you guys would approve?
I don't know if we can make that recommendation.
Okay, I understand. Now, I just...
They can go to the other pages.
Okay, thank you.
Chief? I got one more.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do they have a mower, or do they just have a disc and kind of halfway plow the stuff under?
They do handwork, they disc, and they mow. It just depends on the parcel itself.
Okay. And then each size parcel is a different price, according to, according to this here. Because I'd like looking for somebody to do some property here in town that the man can't find any workers. But I'll check with those guys and see if, see if they're interested, because he's pretty old, he can't handle it himself. And everybody he had doing it got old and quit, too. So, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, I think we're ready to entertain a motion. Oh, public hearing, gosh, I do that every time. Dana, are there any cards?
There are no cards for this item.
Okay, so there's the public hearing. I closed it. Okay, back to council for discussion. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2019-49, confirming the report of costs for abatement of weeds.
Please vote.
Excellent. Item 6B, the entertainment permit 2019-01, has been continued off calendar and no future date has been set at this time. Right, so that's that. So then we're going to move on to our emergency item, so I will defer to Councilman Bash.
I'm actually stealing a project that Ted Hoffman came up with, so I'm hoping he's going to come in here. The concept is his. It was the idea that when you enter the road going up to the memorial, you would have a bank of flags on the right-hand side. And I believe there would be an American flag, and there would be the flags of the various services, and then whatever flag they decide. And then what I thought is that we could do a monument of sorts and tell the story, basically, that as mayor, Kathy Azavito was the person that actually decided that we would do that memorial as a gift to the residents of Norco for our 50 years of cityhood. I thought also you might be able to say some things about Kathy Azavito being the founder of, or the concept of Horstown USA. But mainly, just something that we dedicate, that she is a part of that flag stand. Because she's not a veteran, she can't be inside or actually near the memorial, but that's certainly far enough away that I think that it would be acceptable. And I think that we could, whatever it's going to cost, maybe direct Brian to find out what the cost is, maybe talk to Act One or somebody like that, cut the cost. But I would also propose that the funding would come out of the general fund. I think it's a project that not only would be in honor of somebody who's really served the city for many, many decades, but it's also one of the improvements that I think that the Veterans Committee, I think it's one of the things that we've all said, boy, that would be really cool. And so as we're working on the other things, I mean, it has to go through all the processes and things, but I'm hoping that council may be just given the time constraints that we have right now, if perhaps we could do it and have a groundbreaking of some kind, I'm just not exactly sure. Anyway, thoughts on, from other council members?
Other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, Kevin, and the Veterans Committee has had discussion on Gate Five and the entrance way in there. I understand what you're trying to do, but Gate Five is the entrance to the memorial. And the Veterans Committee did come up with some ideas on that one, to name that Veterans Way, and also to specifically try to enhance the entrance into the memorial. I do respect Kathy. I mean, I went to high school with her and all the trouble she's gone through and all the work she's done for that. That's, it's not, it's not about Kathy. It's about trying to maintain that entrance, especially that location, for the veterans' memorial. And I appreciate what she did on helping us on that. I just don't think that's the appropriate location. If you wanted to name another entrance up at the park, or a location up at the park for, because she did coin Horstown USA, I don't have a problem with that. Or one of the gates into the park, you wanted to name that Kathy Azavito Gate, I don't have a problem with that. But Gate Five, it's just not, myself sitting on the Veterans Committee, myself sitting on the Ingalls Park Master Plan Committee along with Councilman Hannah, we are, we go through and we weigh out that area very carefully to make sure all users and everyone there is respected. It's just not the veterans, it's just not the horse people, everybody up there that uses that park. So I applaud you for doing that, and I'm not, it's no disrespect. I just don't feel that's, that location is the appropriate spot for it. That's my two cents.
Do you have an alternative?
Any other gates, fine. I think one of the entrance, like Gate One, would be great for it. Even in front of the, you know, we already had the Marino Arena plaque there, we had the Clark Arena plaque on the other side. And she was intricate, and she's, she's up there all the time, riding Jim Canna, you know, up there. So it just, not anywhere but Gate Five, and that's just because of what it means to the veterans. And it's just not myself speaking as a veteran, it's all the other Veterans Committee members. And we just went through that presentation we had at our committee meeting about naming that Veterans Way and that. So that was one of the things we came up with. But I'll entertain somewhere else, just not that location. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I really disagree. So, but, so let's name an alternative, something that we dedicate, that maybe focus on the naming of Horstown USA, or something like that. That monument, that memorial would not be there had she not made that decision. And I totally get where you guys are coming from, but actually not guys. I haven't heard from the other committee. The two I've spoken to were both in favor of it. But if you have another suggestion, name it. Maybe do some sort of a plaque. Problem is, sometimes plaques sort of get lost. There were three of them, I didn't even know were up there. Maybe just put it with the other plaques in front of Marino Arena. If you do that, there's room. Or put it in front of Clark Arena. Maybe talk about her there.
Let me do that. I just, like I said, that's just my opinion.
It's fine, I'm not going to fight it. I will just agree to disagree on that.
Do we have cards on this item? We do? Kevin, would you be opposed to hearing the card?
No, I want to hear the card, sure, absolutely. I mean, I'm not totally closed to anything.
Okay.
The first speaker is Jeff Kahane.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Obviously, not necessarily prepared to speak on this since this was a last-minute addition, but as a former member of the Veterans Committee, although I'm not a veteran myself, we were definitely discussing the add entrance and the flags and everything. And I hate to say, Kevin, I think I'm going to fall a little bit more on Councilman Hoffman's side. As, as that focus really is a veterans' focus, I absolutely appreciate everything Kathy's done for the city. So definitely don't want to make it sound like we don't want to honor her. I just think that what Ted is saying is more of where I would fall in line, that we keep that as a veterans' focus, and then absolutely anywhere else up at Ingalls, where there's the horse amenities, where she was definitely, you know, just as focused as, if not more so. And yes, I was on the 50th Birthday Committee, I was obviously there for the opening and everything else to do with the veterans' memorial. So I just think that that concept of the flag entryway of George Ingalls' Way needs to kind of remain veteran-focused. And I would absolutely support any other location to honor Kathy, because she certainly deserves it. So other areas, like you just said, maybe in front of Marino or other places, but that's where I fall on that. So, thank you.
Next speaker, I had Linda Dixon. Looks like she left.
She left.
She went home. Then Karine Holder.
Kind of have the same issues. It's kind of a new idea, but we all really appreciate the dedication that Kathy has shown over the years to helping us trademark and brand Horstown USA, all of the things that she's done. I really appreciate Ted's remarks, maybe that's not the right place, but having a dedication plaque maybe up at the arena, this is going to really come out of left field, but we just had a meeting regarding Ingalls Park and development in the future. You had mentioned Gate One, that's something that has been under discussion, on getting that kind of readjusted, fixing it, making it look a little better. But we have also talked about opening a new community arena that would be available for residents to come ride, have it open to the public, and if, you know, Eddie's looking at me like, oh, man. If we did something like that and honored Kathy in that way, I think that would be really an honor to her love of riding and the city. A long time out, but we can break ground anyway, who cares how long it takes. Would still be a dedication to somebody that has put a lot of time and effort and her whole life into this city. So it would have to be under discussion, there's other options, but a new community arena would be pretty nice. Thank you.
Last speaker, Sue Bacon.
This is a tough one. I remember at Memorial Day, after my dad died, and only the veterans were allowed to represent the five-minute salute to the flag. And I asked, in memory of my father, if I could stand. And I was given the last five minutes. I don't think any of us standing before you or sitting down want to minimize the sacrifice that our veterans have done for this country. But at this time, where this country so needs unity, and we're all standing before supporting our veterans, Kathy Azavito has fought so hard for that memorial, for the city, for this country, for this flag. Again, I am not a veteran, but I'm a daughter of a veteran. I have no problem with it being at the entrance to the memorial. I don't think it takes away from any of this sacrifice that our veterans have brought to this country. But it is inclusive to the family members that have been left behind and still stand for our veterans. Whether it is on this entrance or it's elsewhere, Kathy has been the cheerleader for not only Norco, Horsemen's USA, Horstown USA, but for all of the veterans and for this country. Thank you.
There are no further speaker cards.
All right, so we'll bring it back to council for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was kind of thinking about it, had to go along with what Councilman Hoffman said. I used to be on the committee. I wasn't a veteran, so when Ted got on council, I stepped aside, let him be on there, because he is a veteran, he's done a lot of work, we all done a lot of work up there and everything. But thinking about it, the way Kathy loved to ride her horses and do the Jim Canna performances, I think, in my way of thinking, I think it would be more appropriate to have her, her plaque at one of the arenas where the riders would come near seeing it when they come into the areas to compete. I think it'd just be more appropriate up there by the arenas. That's just my thinking.
I'm going to go back to the great art of compromise, and I appreciate Karine Holder making a suggestion that I even thought of myself. We have a beautiful stagecoach up there, and I'm just thinking to myself, Kathy was on council when that art, public art, was approved. There is nothing in front of that fence that we stuck up there, on there. And not as a permanent location, but as a, thinking of a temporary location for all to see, a nice plaque on that fence, until our, hopefully, our building of our new public arena for a woman that... new public arena for a woman that epitomized, uh, the Horstown USA theme of riding. Always loved her horse getting on there. And having that, then once that arena gets approved, we build, we move that plaque over there, or we dedicate that arena to her, uh, you know, for, uh, everything she's done. And that's, I think, is important. Uh, I'm with you, Kevin, that there is sort of urgency somewhere along the line. And we could put that up there. And then, you know, nobody says, a couple of years down the road, if it's approved, we put it there. We move it.
You know, if I can jump in, like minds think alike, except that, as she was talking, I was thinking where that stagecoach was. And in a way, wouldn't that memorial, I don't want to say memorial because, but that, that plaque, maybe it should permanently go there because it overlooks the entire city. And so you do a, a rock with a plaque, but you do a permanent memorial. That's, that's simple. Maybe has her picture on. I mean, there's great pictures of, with the flag and stuff like that. And you just tell the story of a little bit of Kathy and what she did for the city of Norco and make that the permanent spot. Because literally, you see the entire city. I would make a motion, if you guys are agreeable, I would make a motion to do that.
There a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, um, put a plaque at the stagecoach area at, uh, George Ingalls Equestrian Events Center to show appreciation for all the work and dedication that Kathy Azavito has had, uh, in the city of Norco.
Can we still get the flags?
We can get them. We'll get them. That mattered discussion. And this has to be with Brian. Brian, or Andy, do we need to take that back to the Master Plan Committee? All three of us are here, so...
Yeah, your committee's in the audience and up at the dais. So, I think the council's going to make a direction and...
Okay.
I don't see...
Just a point of order, that's it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded for what I just said a little bit ago. So, we're good for it.
And I'll call the vote. Councilmember Newton? Councilmember Hoffman? Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hannah? Mayor Grunmeier?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
When can this happen?
I would assume so. Alright, so moving on to item number seven. City Council, City Manager, and Staff Communications. We'll start with Mr. King. Mr. Blaze? Matt?
I have nothing.
Councilman Newton?
Just as a follow-up from, uh, what Bill Naylor talked about at public comments to Andy. I think last meeting or the meeting before, we talked about, uh, policy regarding code enforcement. And I was just wondering if we were going to, uh, move forward in that direction, either as an agenda item or as a committee discussion?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay.
One of the first things we are doing actually is preparing our top stories on that, uh, to educate the residents with respect to their obligations as far as taking care of their trials and right away in front of their property.
But we will eventually have a council discussion on...
That's correct. How we want to enforce those requirements.
Thank you.
Councilman Bash? Mr. Harper? Mr. Akura? Councilman Hoffman?
I'm going to piggyback on, uh, Councilman Newton's comment and Bill Naylor's. So, our discussion with code enforcement would deal with whether we're proactive or reactive solutions to some of our code problems in, in our discussion. Okay. With respect to that, to that, okay. I just want to make sure we're looking at that. Okay, thank you.
Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Hannah?
Yes, uh, I'll go back to the National Night Out last night. Uh, after the event was over and I was talking to the council people from Eastville and Harupa Valley and, and, uh, we all agreed, and I told them I'd talk to you since you were involved with the Sheriff's Department, that everybody agreed it would be nice to hold that over on that same area year after year instead of having it on the blacktop and have more room, more people. And it was a lot cooler there than it's ever been since we've been having them. So, I don't know if it was a freak night or what, but it was sure nice. And I forgot to take the main man's cutout over so he'd be seen, but that's okay.
Okay, Lieutenant, do you have anything? Who won the cornhole tournament? Nice! Sheriff's Department for the win again.
It was close, let me tell you.
Nice.
It was close.
Okay, very good.
You know, it was a little disappointing. His guys showed for a day of the cowboy and your troops never showed. Uh, you, you know, I'm going to let it go for a year, okay? You got a year to think about this, okay?
Explorer Academy. It was hot.
Chief, do you have anything to report? Gina?
I just want to second or third the fact that last night was just so much fun. From a staff's perspective, I don't think I've worked and enjoyed. Well, actually, I've enjoyed all of them. But the joy I saw, community outreach programs are wonderful. But to see the young kids just come up and with all of our hats on, and Andy wore his all evening. Um, you know, they, the really cool part, they were looking for the cowboys and the cowgirls and, uh, just walking around, where are they? And, um, just to see the little eyes light up. And I think the last few, uh, National Night Outs were more, of course, they were on a target and asphalt and all that stuff. But this is really about the kids. And, um, it was just, it was really enjoyable. And to see everybody just have so much fun. And, and Robin as well, you know. Thank you so much for the ice cream.
You're welcome. Just trying to bring a little joy and happiness. Brian, do you have anything to report?
No.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.